Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. We're here this afternoon for a work session. And our discussion item this afternoon is the Laramie County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services update. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, with me is my fellow Commissioner, John Kafalas. On the phone, we have Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally. To my right, we have our county manager, Loretta Volker. And we have a big team from the sheriff's office. We have the sheriff himself, John Fayan. We have Captain Tim Keaton, and we have Chief Justin White cell. And so welcome all, and we'll let you kick things off and get started.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate being here. John Fan, Laramie County Sheriff. I am going to speak just very briefly for the opportunity to introduce the gentleman on my left, who is now Chief White soul.
Oh, we need to make that correction. Okay, all right. Duly noted.
Lieutenant, he's now chief. You'll notice the bugles on his collar. But it's that time of year. It's that time of year where our emergency services crews are going to get very, very busy with all the folks who are recreating in our wonderful outdoors spaces here in Laramie County. And Chief White soul is here just to give you a little bit of update on how what's going on with the mitigation program. Our new Phantom Canyon crew, which has been so far traversing the country from Minnesota down to New Mexico and some other areas, including the the rank change, which we were poking fun at Justin about a little bit, and will continue to do so. So I'll turn it over to you, Justin. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Chief Justin White soul.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Commissioners and Loretta for having us today. Obviously, my intent today was to come and give you a little bit of background of how emergency services in the sheriff's office is evolving to meet the needs of the the community and those that recreate in Laramie County as well. And I did include in the link that I sent with the document that was electronic. There is a link in there for the wildfire strategy and all hazard preparedness plan for Laramie County that the sheriff's office put together. And if you get a chance, that does speak to kind of the wildfire strategy and all hazards. The focus was wildfire strategy, but as we were building it out, we quickly realized that not only do we do fires, but a lot of times floods, tornadoes, and a little bit of everything else. So I wanted to make sure that it encompasses everything that we deal with and make sure that it was all covered in there. And as you all know, or may not know, wildland fire, we've been fighting it the same way for over a hundred years. When you really think about it, but there's a lot of new technology and equipment that's coming out and hopefully going to make our job more efficient and effective as firefighters, but also in the all hazard arena as well. And I'll talk about that a little bit later, but just really kind of wanted to highlight some of the things the sheriff had mentioned. And as you can see, I also included our chart that shows the amount of calls we've had from basically nineteen seventy until two thousand and twenty four. And again, there's some. The data back in nineteen seventy to probably nineteen ninety wasn't great data, but it's the best I had at the time. And a lot of that was handwritten notes, as you can imagine. So I'm just trying to keep track of where we're at. And obviously, that red line is the total amount of calls that emergency services unit section deals with on a yearly basis. And most of the years until you get to twenty twenty, twenty twenty are on a five year interval. But then twenty twenty one through twenty twenty four is every year. So just kind of showing you a large spike there, obviously, the last couple of years. And that has a lot to do with our medical unit that I'll talk about within the emergency services section a little bit as well. But obviously, a huge spike in calls that we've had just in Laramie County, showing the growth and amount of people that recreate and play in Laramie County as well. And feel free to ask questions because obviously, I'm just going through the the document that I included. So if you have questions, just feel free to jump in. The first thing I want to talk about, and the sheriff alluded to it, is that the title changes. The intent behind that was those that we work with the most, which is the fire departments, the U.S. Forest Service Division of Fire Prevention and Control. More of that fire world than in the law enforcement world. We tried to align our folks so that when we go into meetings and have briefings that were that people understand our role and kind of where we fit in and who our equals are when we are having those conversations with the Forest Service, the the fire departments and from the local area. So it helps tremendously when we're having those briefings, discussions. So my title changed to chief from lieutenant. And then the two sergeants that are in emergency services, they became battalion chiefs, like you've probably heard from PFA and Loveland several times. And then our emergency services specialists became field commanders because it was either captain or lieutenant, but that got really confusing with law enforcement because our lieutenants are pretty high up in the hierarchy where they would have been a little bit lower. So field commander was kind of a compromise to be able to make sure we're all talking the same language when we're having those briefings and conversations when we have an incident or pre-planning. So that was why the title changes, just to align with those who we work with the most. Next was the Emergency Operations Medical Unit. And I know Commissioner Kafalas had an opportunity to sit down and talk with Bam or Jeff Bazmanowicz, who's our battalion chief of that unit and runs the Emergency Operations Medical Program. So we do have two paramedics right now that do all of the work of that unit, which is a heavy lift for those folks, just with two of them. We're looking to expand that out hopefully in the future. They provide all the training to the sheriff's office. So when I say all the sheriff's office, that's civilian employees, the jail, patrol, dispatch, everybody that works for the sheriff, but also includes all of our volunteers. So the over three hundred volunteers with the dive rescue team, the Laramie County Search and Rescue Team, Diamond Peak Ski Patrol, and then also all of our wildland firefighters. So just the training alone, you're probably talking almost eight hundred people that they're providing training to, which is a significant amount. They spent the last two days just doing CPR, first aid, and tactical EMS training the last couple of days. They also have been through extensive training with CSU Hospital, Vet Hospital, to learn how to take better care of our canine friends as well. So they've spent, they've done a lot of advanced care with canine for both our law enforcement folks, but also our search and rescue because they use dogs as well. And they go into environments where we maybe don't have access to the vet hospital in a timely fashion. So they spend a lot of time learning how to take care of all of those that serve the sheriff to make sure that we can complete our mission and that we're taking care of them, both back here in town, but also when they go into those austere environments that our folks and our animals are taken care of. So and then also, obviously, they respond to a lot of medical calls in those austere environments. The plane crash that happened on Storm Mountain recently. Yesterday, we just had a sixteen year old that passed out or fell off Gray Rock, passed out. And so Bam had gone up there to provide medical care because the ambulance, they do a great job. But a lot of times, they're either behind by the time they get the call or maybe they don't have the right equipment or gear to go into that austere environment. Bam and Tyler's are other paramedic, and they carry a lot of gear, ropes, helmets, life jackets, PFDs, to be able to go in those environments and be safe and not cause more problems. So the ambulance, they don't always have that equipment and aren't able to always spend two hours away in that austere environment. So those ambulances, they like to stay close to town because that's where majority of the calls are, right? So Bam and Tyler fill a huge gap, and we're looking to expand that in the future just from the amount of calls that we get. Because if you look at that graph, the blue line on that graph was the medical calls. And we started the program in two thousand and twenty two and had just under a hundred calls just for them alone. And last year, we almost had over two hundred calls just for that paramedic program. So.
Looks like Commissioner Kafalas has a question, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. My question, Chief, is how do we coordinate the the work that you just described with the volunteer fire protection districts? Because don't they also have EMS folks going out on some of these calls? How does that coordination occur there?
Yep, that's a great question and something that I skipped. So I appreciate the question. But so they do training with the volunteer fire departments a lot as well. They, once we have some more folks, we're looking to expand more training into the VFDs, the volunteer fire departments as well. But right now, they coordinate rescue with them, and a lot of times if they hear on the radio there's a traffic accident on Highway fourteen where there's multiple vehicles, they'll start Bam and or Tyler will start heading that way, knowing that the VFDs will get overwhelmed really quick with a lot of patients. So they are there as a force multiplier to assist the VFDs and ambulances in those in those times. And a lot of times, they either provide direct medical care or they will organize the ambulance and just help out the fire department to make sure that they're successful.
And if I may do a quick, quick follow up. And so our two EMS folks, Bam and Tyler, are they based out of the facility on North Shields, out of the Emergency Services Building, which we'll get to more later, a discussion of beginning a new project and all that. But that's where they're based at.
Yeah, they're based out of where it used to be our training room. They're in Cubicle World, as we call it, in the current facility. And they will be relocated at the new facility once that's completed.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. I'm just curious, actually, I do. They don't assist with transport at all. They're just assisting at the scene with any medical care that might be needed. And and who is the medical director who oversees those paramedics license?
Yeah, that's two great questions. So the medical director is actually Anyone Not Ready. So there's two doctors. Dr. Hurtado, who has an extensive background in U.S. Forest Service smoke jumper world in those austere environments. And also Jamie, Dr. Jamie Reisberg, who is has extensive military background in special operations. So two great doctors. It used to be Dr. Tremblay with UC Health. But the two doctors from Anyone Not Ready has graciously came on as our medical director recently and take care of that. And then the other question was.
Do they transport at all? And I do know Dr. Tremblay. I do know Dr. Tremblay, and I know I know him personally, but I also I think I know one of the others. But yeah, my other question was, you guys, do you ever? Would you ever or what's the what is the transport, your transport? Or would you?
No. So Bam and Tyler do not transport. There's a lot that goes with transporting patients as far as payment and a lot of those things and having the right vehicles. Bam and Tyler's sole purpose is to take care of them in that austere environment and get them to the ambulance that can transport them to the hospital or a helicopter, medevac, Flight for Life, or something like that that can transport them to the hospital. Their job is just to stabilize and get them to transportation.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep going.
Perfect. So obviously, next is a big program that we started a couple of years ago as well. And it was recognized by the Commissioners as a need. The Wildfire Partners Program, as you may be aware, the person that filled out before, she resigned, and we are in the process of filling that role. It should be filled hopefully in the next month or two at the most, depending on how the final interviews go. But we are in the final interviews. We do have some three strong candidates for that position. That we're excited for all three of them, and we'll see how that goes. But I feel like all three candidates are great candidates that will provide a lot to Laramie County and can continue that Wildfire Partners Program. While that individual had resigned, Battalion Chief Derek Rosenquist, who you've met, he has taken the lead on the Wildfire Partners Program and continued the work that had been done previously, working with the communities, providing the community wildfire protection plans, working with the different entities and agencies throughout Laramie County that are working on mitigation throughout, trying to reduce the fire hazard around communities and homes. So Derek has done a great job continuing that and also doing the home ignition zone inspections as well. And one of the things that we continue to do, we developed and then continue to do is the gold standard inspections. As you all are aware, insurance in rural communities, the WUI, the wildland urban interface areas is getting difficult to obtain insurance sometimes.
That's okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I do have a story to share that did lower their rates. There was a couple that came to my town hall last night, the sheriff was there, that talked about their townhomes and then at Estes Park, the neighbors and them were all losing their insurance, and then their rates were, I think they were reporting going up to $69,000 a year. And so they were able to lower it down to $33,000 a year by doing the roofs and doing the mitigation work all together in the neighborhood. And so that made an impactful decision for them, and the sheriff's agent was actually shocked. But I just wanted to share that. That's related to my question now, is since, and actually, that's where I'm at, is getting ready to sign that bill regarding the risk modeling for wildfire and insurance with the governor and the insurance commissioner, Michael Conway, today. And that will probably increase the need or capacity for homeowners wanting to have these certificates, since ours is recognized as one that's in the bill to be, valid to be used. What are the thoughts on its, for capacity needs, either way, whether it's through the fire departments or your program? You know, what are the thoughts about that, or any planning to kind of meet that capacity? Potential capacity increase? Or need?
So Commissioner, Sheriff John Fan, I appreciate the question. I'm going to jump in only based upon the interactions I had last night at your town hall, which I was greatly thankful to be able to attend. So I know I spoke to some homeowners up there, and I cannot remember the name of the neighborhood, but it's right across from Horse Tooth Mountain Park, Ender Sheriff Hudson used to live up there. But she approached us and said, there's 30 homeowners up there who are waiting there for inspection. So this is a conversation I've yet to have with the gentleman on my left about what does that look like? What is Derek's capacity, especially for 30 to 60 days out from hiring a replacement in our Wildfire Partners Program? I don't know what it takes to do those inspections. I don't know if we can reallocate some of the IA mod team or the Phantom Canyon team when they get back from wherever in the country they are this week, because they've been all over, and the chief will talk about that here in a minute. But it was very apparent at the meeting last night that increased capacity is needed in our community, if nothing else, because of the insurance concerns, let alone the wildfire dangers that we seem to face every year in Laramie County. So thank you for the question.
No, and that's a...
Thank you, Sheriff.
Oops, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Captain. I'm curious, then, when do we look at charging flight fees to help cover some of the costs for capacity and things? I don't, I'm just throwing that out there as something to consider, so, you know, because this is really needed, but also, you know, we're all looking at budget things right now as well. So I just wanted to kind of share that concern as well. And I apologize for interrupting. It's kind of, I'm watching you online and then talking on the phone, and sometimes there's delay. I apologize again, thank you.
No, and that's perfect. So a couple of things. One is, yes, we're looking at expanding capacity in a lot of the rural communities, Redfeather Lakes, Glenhaven, Pooter Canyon. We've expanded capacity by using ambassadors from the local communities that we've trained up to do the inspections to help out. And I know we've worked with Pooter Fire Authority to do some of the inspections around Horse Tooth Mountain Park area that the sheriff referred to. The difficulty is they only have so much capacity as well. Where, like Pooter Canyon, I think we have 12 ambassadors that can do inspections. So it's a capacity thing. Once we have the new Wildfire Partners Program person on, we're looking at bringing more volunteers on or part-time personnel to help with a lot of those inspections. So it is something that we're looking to build out. It's just I want to make sure we bring the Wildfire Partners Program Coordinator on, and they have ability to build that program out rather than us build it and trying to figure out how to work that program when they get on. It may be a lot overwhelming for them, so I'm trying to figure out how to do it right. And the sheriff is exactly right. We are looking at using the Phantom Canyon Crew to help supplement those inspections as well. So we are building out capacity. It's taken a little bit longer than we had hoped, just with the individual, when she resigned, left us a little bit behind, but we are now planning on catching back up and really building that program out that we can meet the needs of the community, because I do know how important it is. And a lot of legislation that is coming through with the new Wildland Urban Interface codes require potentially a reinspection every three years, which, again, will be a heavy lift for us. And so we're trying to figure some of that out as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep moving.
Sure. The mitigation assistance program, or what we refer to as the MAP, and I don't know, we had talked about it, and you may or may not remember it, but the mitigation assistance program, we, the sheriff's office had identified, or we identified homeowners in the community that, one, could not do the work themselves, the mitigation around their home, and, two, could not physically afford to do the work around their home as well. And that date on there is wrong. It should be a successful 2024 implementation. But last year, we were able to do a proof of concept with two properties that met those two targets. One, they can pay for it, and, two, they couldn't physically do the work. And so we used our Phantom Canyon Crew to go up there and cut and do mitigation around their property using funding that we get through the sheriff's office, through the inspections that we had talked about previously, or assessments, because we do charge a little bit of money for those gold standard assessments. So we are able to use that funding and give it back to the community by doing the work around homes. We're hoping to build out that program more. We bought a dump trailer to where we can load the material from around the home and take it to the dump, so the homeowner doesn't have to deal with that as well. We basically go up there and remove the material and haul it off for them, so they have nothing to do. We pay for it out of the sheriff's office funding as well. So it's all, they obviously have to meet certain criteria to fit within that program, but it did work successfully, and it's something we hope to continue and build out even further. Mitigation, we continue the Phantom Canyon Crew. When they're not on fires, they are, and even, and I'll talk about that a little bit, but even with our crew down in Arizona, New Mexico, right now, they are, we do backfill, and we do continue to do mitigation work around the county. A lot of the work that we're doing right now has been on county open space, working with Megan Flanagan from the Department of Natural Resources. She identifies where the work needs to be done, the type of work to meet prescribed standard set by the Colorado State Forest Service. And our folks go out and implement the work and make sure that it's done to reduce the potential for a wildfire, one, either to come from county open space and impact a community, or to help slow the spread of a wildfire that impacts county open space.
Quick question, Madam Chair.
Yeah, please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, thank you. How is that paid for? DNR budget, or how's that paid for?
Yeah, so Megan and her folks, they secure grant money through numerous different avenues, through the state, through federal grants, and then also Northern Colorado Watershed has contributed a lot of funding as well. But it's all grant work that we do that on, and it's, helps offset the cost of the seasonals that we bring on for the crew, so it helps offset a lot of those costs. But that's all grant funded. And then also, in addition to the work on county open space, we're working with Lori Hodges and her folks from Office of Emergency Management, and Josh Roberts, who secured a lot of funding for grants to do mitigation work around the county on roadways. So our crew, hopefully, starting here in June, will be doing a lot of those evac and egress roadways throughout Laramie County that have been prioritized and identified as a high priority. So our Phantom Canyon Crew will be starting to work on that, and we've secured, I want to say, just over $4 million with Josh to do that work for the next couple of years on the roadways. But 20 people can do a lot of good work in a short amount of time. So we're hoping to kick that off here in June and show a lot of great work that we can do with the communities on that roadway. And those are obviously a high priority, because when we have evacuations or responding to fires, getting in and out of the fire is probably one of our biggest concerns, right? Making sure people can get out, but also that we can get in to fight the fire and the roads not cut off from advancing wildfire. The wildfire program, as you all know, has been around for a long time. This year, we have over 100 on-call firefighters to help supplement our 20-person crew that we have. We've trained and got them all ready. It's always interesting, because as it's raining, they all get saddened by the amount of rain that we have, where I enjoy the rain and am thankful for it. They're a lot younger than I am and haven't lived through a Cameron Peak or a High Park fire, so they're excited to get out. But we have over 100 firefighters ready to help, and those are part-time seasonals. We only bring them on when needed, right? So they are great, and they're a rambunctious group, ready to go out and help us when they can. One of the things I wanted to highlight that you may or may not be aware of is the federal government changed their funding for their employees. They've increased their salaries and increased their pay rates for all federal employees that do wildland fire, and that will have a significant impact when we have an Alexander Mountain Fire, a Pearl Fire, or any fire where the federal government is coming in to assist us. We will probably see a 25% to 35% increase in cost on having them help us. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I mean, I do think it's good that they increased their pay, but it will have a significant impact to our expenses on a fire. The other thing...
Do, have they, with the cuts in the federal government, I mean, do we know if they've kept folks on to do that work? Is there any concern about shortages in that space at all?
No, there's no shortages on wildland fires. The wildland fire teams are all up and running at full capacity unless they couldn't fill because they weren't able to fill vacancies, but it has nothing to do with funding. All the federal firefighters were funded 100%.
Good to know.
Although it seems to me that there have been cuts to workforce at the U.S. Forest Service level, and I would imagine that those rangers, those foresters are out there, you know, they're eyes on the ground, and they can help us identify if there's something beginning.
Yes, there were impacts definitely in the federal government to employees, trail crews, some of the biologists, things like that. But the wildland fire teams are up and running, but there were definitely impacts to other areas of the Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management and National Park Service.
Thank you. Commissioner Shattuck McNally, any questions?
Not at this time, thanks.
I wanted to highlight that Laramie County Sheriff's Office has partnered with Excel and Pano AI, which I'm sure you all are aware, since you approved the four cameras in Laramie County last year. But those are up and running, and we do have access to those and get notifications when there are smokes. I have been getting a lot of notifications, but they will be a great tool that we can include in our arsenal to hopefully attack fires quickly and make sure that they stay small. So I'm super excited about those Pano AI cameras. I think they'll be a benefit for the community and also for situational awareness if we do have a fire, to make sure that we know where the fire's heading and what is out in front of it. And I know Pano's looking at bringing a few more cameras in, and they will be coming back to the Board of County Commissioners before too long to ask to put up more cameras as well. So the other company that we partnered with was Aurora Tech. They're out of Germany. They just built a new facility, or they just got a new office here in Denver, Colorado, but they're a satellite-based company that detects and monitors wildland fires from space. So we are able to get detections and alerts from space as well, but also know where the fire's going. And about every six to eight minutes, we get updates through the satellites that go overhead, obviously, if it's cloudy. One, typically, you don't have to worry about too many fires, but they can't see through the clouds. But they are working on proprietary satellites that will be a lot better than the satellites that currently exist. And I know they've launched three of those in the last couple of months. They can see a little bit through clouds and have a lot more information that they provide with those proprietary satellites. The sheriff's office was the first company in the United States that partnered with Aurora Tech to have that, access to that technology. So that's pretty exciting as well. And they did a big article in social media about how the sheriff's office was one of the first companies in Colorado to access their technology or in the United States. So I thought that was pretty interesting. The Phantom Canyon Crew, which you've heard numerous times today. So when, in the fire world, everything has a type to it, right? So there's a type-one fire, type-two fires. Type-one fires are Cameron Peak. A type-two fire is kind of like an Alexander Mountain Fire. A type-five fire is a single tree where we just send a couple of people to. So they go anywhere from type-one to type-five. And same thing with, when we start looking at crews, modules, squads, everything has numbers attached to it. So a crew is anything over 18. A module's anything from 12 to 17. And then a squad is anything five to 10. So the reason we changed from the initial attack module to the Phantom Canyon Crew is because this year, we are staffed with 20 personnel for the whole summer. We still have our eight full-time staff that fill that and are the overhead for the crew, but then we brought on 11 seasonal. May 1st through, well, May 17th through October will be those 11 seasonals that'll be helping out to fulfill that 20-person crew. Again, they do work, mitigation work throughout the county, and then they respond to wildland fires in Laramie County, but also, as the sheriff spoke to, they respond anywhere in the country like we've done over the years. Right now, the crew, they started out in Minnesota and drove after that fire was taken care of. They ended up in Arizona and then bounced around between New Mexico and Arizona, and they will be back at the middle of next week. They go out for two weeks, come home for a couple of days, and then if they're still needed, we'll send them back out somewhere else. So, but while they've been out, we've backfilled a little bit to make sure we still have staffing, even though it's been raining, to continue the mitigation work, but also in case we have search and rescue, or plane crashes, or floods, or anything else, that we still have enough staffing and we can rely on the 100 other firefighters if we needed something of significance to pull more people in. So that is kind of the intent of that program. So that crew has formed up, did their training, and got out right after they finished their critical training for the year. So it was kind of neat to see them kick off. And they actually, the PFA fire that was right behind Vern's a couple, like a month ago, I think it was, that ended up about 15 acres, we sent the crew to that fire. It was their kind of first deployment ever, and it was kind of neat to see 20 people walking into a local fire to go put it out. Pooter Fire Authority was grateful for their assistance. Those folks, like I said, are young and ambitious and were excited to mop up. Basic gardening is kind of what it looks like, turning the dirt over and putting water on it, but the young folks were super excited to do that. So it was fun to watch.
Chief, can I ask a question about, when you have crews that go to Minnesota, New Mexico, Arizona, is there any reimbursement, or is that sort of a mutual aid kind of situation?
Nope, it's 100% reimbursable through the federal government and a Division of Fire Prevention and Control. It's 100% reimbursable, so we don't absorb any costs.
Thank you for explaining.
No, it actually is a lot quicker, and usually, we get reimbursed within at least three months. So last year was an anomaly because they were doing auditing of the system, and it took a little, it took about eight to nine months to get reimbursed last year, but that should be quicker this year. Something I had talked to you all about previously, but I wanted to highlight again, was the zone fire restrictions. zone fire restrictions. The sheriff's office is implementing zone fire restrictions. So again, it'll be 6,000 feet and below, 6,000 to 9,000 feet and above 9,000 feet. Those zones align with the National Weather Service fire weather zones. So red flags and fire weather watches will align with our restriction zones, which was the intent, to make sure that we covered all that and we were in alignment rather than conflicting, to make it a little bit more easier to understand for the public and also the fire departments and those enforcing the fire restrictions. The other thing is that gives, having zone fire restriction gives us a lot more flexibility throughout. We're up at 9,000 feet, Chambers Lake, a lot of times doesn't see a high fire danger, and so they would still be able to have campfires where maybe the other two zones are in fire restrictions. So that should help, and I think it'll make it better for those that recreate in Laramie County. The things we have to do to finish that and making sure that everything comes into alignment and is completed before we implement that, hopefully before the rains stop. But we are going to do a big push with education and outreach between the sheriff's office, public information officer, but also we're working with Michelle Byrd out of the county commissioner's office for public information to do that education and outreach. So we're working hand in hand to make sure we have all that done. To finalize the website that I and Arc GIS, or the GIS folks at the county are helping me with, we have to finalize that to make sure we can communicate to the public whether we're in or out of fire restrictions, and then also working with road and bridge to make sure that the signage, one, has been updated and that we have enough signage to make sure that those zones are covered as well. So once those have all been completed, we'll be ready to push out the new zone fire restrictions, and we're probably a month away from doing that, so hopefully we don't dry out before that. But that is pretty exciting because I do think that that'll be a huge benefit for everybody to have zone fire restrictions, and I think it'll help some of the confusion that we have. And we've worked with the VFDs and the local fire departments to make sure we're all in alignment on implementing those. So we've had conversations and made sure everybody's on the same page. The fire season response, I wanted to touch on a little bit for 2025. Even though it's been raining the last few days, before all the rains came, we had already responded to over 12 fires, which is a little bit of a high number. So the rains been great to have and see that it knocked down the fire danger here in Laramie County for a while. And all those 12, all but one, and the one that PFA had was just over 10 acres. So, and then previous to the rain, we also saw a lot of red flag days, which was kind of unusual that early. Typically, you don't see eight red flag days early on, and some of that's because of the National Weather Service standards, as far as what kicks off a red flag has probably changed over the last 20 years or been more scrutinized over the last 20 years. But it's also that, obviously, it was hotter and drier early on this year, and we didn't get a lot of rain. We were in drought from last summer still, and we still see a little bit of that drought even with the amount of rain we get, have gotten. So that drought may pull back a little bit, and hopefully that'll happen as the rain continues, as it's raining currently.
Question, please.
Yeah, please go ahead, Commissioner.
Regarding the National Weather Service, what is your level of concern with, I think there have been staffing cuts to the National Weather Service? How concerned are you about, you folks, about that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Greg Hevner, who is from the National Weather Service, was at our All-Hazard Summit that the sheriff's office puts on every year, and that was just a couple of weeks ago, and he was there to speak and address us and address that specific topic. He assured us that they would meet the needs of first responders. They have had some staffing reduction, but he assured us that they would meet the needs. They, instead of having two spot weather forecasts a day, they're going down to one, but I don't see that as a huge impact. And Greg was very positive about being able to cover any weather needs that the sheriff's office and Office of Emergency Management may have, and we've built a great relationship with Greg over the last few years, and I have no doubt that he'll meet those needs from my conversations even offline with him outside of the summit. So I feel confident that they'll meet the needs, so. The last thing I wanted to touch on was just the emergency services team, which includes the battalion chiefs and emergency services specialists, or the field commanders. I still use the old terminology. Again, just a reminder that it's a team of five, the two battalion chiefs, and then the three field commanders that cover Laramie County for all disasters, search and rescue, water rescues, anything like that, 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year. There's always somebody on call, and we always respond to any incident. But a team of five obviously gets impacted as our call load continues to increase. So those folks are doing amazing and great work and are always dedicated to respond and assist where we can. And like I said, they're, you know, they respond on all county lands, all Forest Service land, anywhere in the county, and they're always ready to go, and they love what they do, but it definitely impacts them and their family, but they enjoy what they do, and it's exciting for them to do it, and they do a great job in making sure they meet the intent of the sheriff and the mission that they're tasked with at the time. So those folks, we have a great group, and we've had a lot of calls the last year, and the last page is just showing you kind of a shotgun picture of where the calls were in 2024, and they're color-coded. Hopefully, nobody's too colorblind. And then also the 2025 calls year-to-date. But it just kind of shows that we cover all of Laramie County, not just anywhere specifically, but you can see we go up into the very northwest part of Laramie County, all the way to the southeast, also up in the Rocky Mountain National Park. And then even last year, the crew, the fire crew had gone to California, New Mexico, Montana, Minnesota, and that's not represented here, but it did, they did go out quite a few times last year. So just kind of an idea, it's a good visual representation of where we end up going a lot. And Gray Rock, there should be a huge spot on Gray Rock, so. Yes. But that was all I had, just to give you an update on kind of where we're at. So if there's any other questions or thoughts?
Commissioner, any questions or thoughts? Go ahead, please.
Sorry, Cassidy. My first question is, how do we use the services of the Laramie County Conservation Corps? Don't they help with some of the wildfire mitigation work and other kinds of things related to that?
Yeah, so they do. They're working with MEGAN a lot on those, and then a lot of the private entities, and actually, all their vehicles are staged out at our facility. After the fleet facility moved, they didn't want to commute all the way to the new location, so we had enough room at our facility to house their trailers and vehicles. So that in itself is a good move because then we can collaborate a little bit more, and the teams can work together on the mitigation. We didn't run into those folks a lot. But yes, the Laramie County Conservation Corps is doing a lot of that mitigation work in and around the county as well, and so really trying to make sure that we're complementing each other and not conflicting, which has always been, never been a problem, and I don't see it becoming one, but just learning how we can work together to continue to do great work in the county is kind of my goal.
I'll just ask one more question and then just a quick appreciation. I had a third question, but I'm going to hold off on that. My second question is, recently, there was a news story based on a body of research that indicated the next five years are going to be very hot. I don't know if you're, I suspect you're aware of that, and with that in mind, colleagues, are we doing anything to adjust or further prepare for what might be hotter days that have all kinds of implications?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, some of the things, leveraging technology to, so our biggest, our biggest problems when it comes to wildfires or disasters is awareness and detection. And so the technology, the satellites and the cameras, is a great way to get ahead of it and try and reduce the impacts. The earlier we know about it, the quicker we can respond and move people out of the way of it, whether it's a mudslide, a fire, a flood. If we are aware of it, we can move people out of the way. The rain gauges that have been put up around the county are great as well. The river gauges that monitor the rivers help us. So leveraging technology and continue to seek new technology to leverage, realizing that there's a fiscal impact with everything as well, right? So not just doing every kind of technology, but those that are going to provide the most success. So technology is the first piece. The second piece is staffing, trying to figure out ways we can increase the staffing to respond to those incidents as we, as it gets hotter and drier.
How can we get more volunteers on the ground, eyes on the ground? We must have, we have those community hubs, resiliency hubs. I mean, are people being trained to kind of keep a lookout for things, and if they see something, to report it early on?
Yeah, so the National Weather Service does the spotter training, and we use them a lot as well. And then the work that Office of Emergency Management with, in those hubs they're doing is also training folks to do a lot of that, and that's something that we are collaborating with to make sure that they're getting the right information, to make sure that we're getting the information we need to be able to respond accordingly to whatever that incident is.
Thank you for your informed response, and wish to express a lot of gratitude coming from the heart.
Thank you.
Commissioner, can I comment on your question just for a second as well? Tim Keaton with the Laramie County Sheriff's Office. To go along with how are we going to attack these potentially greater numbers of fires and then with a higher level of hot, dry weather, potentially more dangerous fires? If you look at a national basis, about 95% of all wildfires are put out and fully contained, I shouldn't say put out, fully contained within the first 24 hours. And even Cameron Peak started with one tree, right? It all starts with one small fire. So this concept that we've put together with this Phantom Canyon Crew, because of fiscal constraints, I have asked Justin to attempt to fund 80% of their salary with these grant dollars, so that they're not impacting the county's budget. Ironically, last year, he was able to hit that at 86%. So 86% of their, of putting these extra people on, really, per se, didn't cost us much. So that's one advantage of getting the mitigation work done. But one of the bigger advantages of that is having these teams deployed in four- or five-person teams and have them randomly deployed and dispersed out so that they will, there will always be a team, I shouldn't say always, there will be, often be a team more closely located with the start so that they have a shorter response time to go there and act as an initial attack module, even though they're a four- or five-person team, to try to get that first initial start under control right away. So that's one of the strategies that Justin is taking, or that Chief Whitel is taking to try to mitigate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can, you were talking about technology, and I do think it's good to leverage technology where it's, you know, cost-effective and can, you know, be the eyes, you know, really to find the fires and the way they're going. What about drones? Can you talk just a little bit about, do you employ drones? And, you know, I feel like for search and rescue and different kinds of things like that, they're probably pretty valuable. Is that correct? And how many do you employ in your, out of your office?
Yeah. So right now, we have four drones just in emergency services. The sheriff's office, I believe, has around 15 drones. But just in emergency services, we have four. Three are the quadcopter design, so you get about 20 to 30-minute flight time. We do have a fixed-wing drone that can fly for over 70 minutes, and can actually track and do, has a little bit better zoom camera and things like that for search and rescue, for finding the fires, or monitoring both of those as well. And then in addition to the flight drones, we do have an underwater drone for dive rescue, obviously, trying to find those gaps where the most exposure to our people, and one of those is putting people underwater. Altitude is never a great thing. So if we can find the object with a robot, a drone, that makes everybody a little bit safer, and then the diver just has to go down and recover the object, that makes it a lot safer and more efficient for the divers. So we are continuing to look at that as well. So drones are significant impact to make us more effective and efficient at our job. You are correct.
Lauren, do you have any comments?
I guess, one thing you all didn't mention that I think is really important for the community is the work that's being done on mitigation is being done by a lot of parties across the community, some nonprofits, some volunteers, some very organized as part of what the county does. Tracking those efforts has been really difficult in the past and understanding where work has been done and where it hasn't been done. And so Justin and team have sponsored a mapping project that does track where these things are happening. So if the state does mitigation work, if our Conservation Corps does work, if we do work, so that there's a better-prepared map for those who go into the wildland area to fight the fire. So I, that is a technology advance. It feels like we're just tracking what other people do, but it's really important work to understand what has not been touched, what is still really wild, what has been mitigated, and it helps them to deploy resources in different ways. So I know we're kind of in the middle of this right now. It's not really ready for primetime, but hopefully, maybe this time next year, we could demonstrate that mapping system to the commissioners and let you all see just the value of that. There's so much that happens behind the scenes, and the creative work of Justin and his team are really to be commended.
Thank you, Lauren. Yeah, that sounds like a great project. Glad that so many people are concerned about this issue and working on this issue. So I don't think we have anything else. Did you, oh, she's not on. She's not on again until 2:30, so she has left. Is there anything else, any last words of wisdom you want to leave us with? We really appreciate the work you're doing in keeping our community safe, but, you know, this also keeps our water supply safe and other, our roads safe, and so this is not, I mean, while, while we want to keep people safe and prevent, you know, things from burning, there are a lot of things at stake as you do your work, so we appreciate that. Air quality as well, that's correct, yes.
So no words of wisdom, but an invitation. So July 12th, we are planning a legislators' day out at Emergency Services Building. So oftentimes in Denver, there's a couple of bills that come up every year about firefighting, technology, search and rescue, those kinds of things. And I don't think that people realize that search and rescue, wildland firefighting is really, it's a local-based function. It's based through your local fire departments, your 501(c)3s, through your sheriff's offices, and people look to it as a state function more often than not. So we plan on inviting the state legislators to come out for four hours to our fire cache where they'll get an opportunity to meet search and rescue, dive rescue, Diamond Peaks ski patrol, see the equipment, the drones, and we're happy to get rid of the drones in exchange for a helicopter and a submarine, if you'd like. But also for our commissioners, we would love to have you come out and join us. We will, it's a Saturday, we will barbecue, feed you, but give you an opportunity to meet the men and women who actually are on the fire lines, some of the equipments that they use.
Do our folks know about this?
They do not.
You'll make sure one of your people lets Melissa know?
Absolutely.
Put it in the calendar.
Yep, but would love to have you guys come if you can make it.
Thank you. I think I will be at a conference that weekend, but I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that at all. But maybe Commissioner Kofalas can come, and certainly really glad. I think it's, every opportunity we get to inform our state and federal partners is a good opportunity, right? I mean, we need them to understand sort of what we deal with at this level and the work you're doing. So that, I think that's wonderful, and I'm sorry I can't join you. I'll be under fluorescent lights at a meeting, but. I'll be under fluorescent lights at a meeting, but, which is not as much fun. Much less fun, I agree.
I just wanted to add one thing, and, and you'll see it in wildfire strategy and all that, or preparedness plan, is that Laramie County is, has the honor, which I don't know it's an honor, but has the honor of being the most declared disasters of any county in Colorado. And we have over 30 declared, federal declared disasters just in Laramie County, and that's 15 of those, I think it's 19 of those. 19 of those have happened since 2020. The closest next county is 19 declared disasters, so we exceed everybody else by a significant amount. And so I think leveraging and using those tools that'll make us more effective and efficient at our job, this is kind of the place to do it. And having like Aurora Tech, a satellite-based company housed in Denver, and even talking with T-Mobile and AT&amp;T when they bring out their mobile, cows, the cellular on wheels, having them located closer to where the majority of the disasters happen, because we were having to get them from Texas to arrive here. And we're like, we have more disasters than anybody else, why don't you move them closer to Laramie County where we have a lot of the disasters? So working with those entities that have those resources and moving them closer to the front range of Colorado would be a huge benefit for us all as well. So as we hear about things and trying to convince them to come here, because we do have a lot of disasters, not that we want to, it's just the reality, right? So I think if we continue to do that, that'll help as well.
Thank you. And I think the honor comes in, in our preparedness and how well we do when, when we do face those kind of emergency situations. And so kudos to you and your team and Emergency Management and all the people that work together to, to make things better after those things happen, so good work. All right, it is 2:29, and we will adjourn and transfer to our next work session. Good to see you all. Thanks.